Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Marcy, would you call the role plays?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Merringa.
Here.
Nordhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Present.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
Mayor Mas.
Here.
Well, tonight, for the end location, we have Pastor Jeff Watson from First Prehorm Church here in Granville. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to sit.
Lord, you're so good. You are the King of Kings. You are the Lord of Lords. You're the Alpha of the Omega, the beginning of the end. Lord, we just praise you tonight. We thank you for this space. Lord, we thank you for the space to talk about this place and this city and the plans that you have for Granville. And everyone here loves this place, loves this city, has stories of this place. And so, Lord, we just praise you for that. We thank you for that. We pray for peace and unity in our conversations and in our day-to-day lives as we live in Granville and love the people of Granville. And, well, we thank you for both the leadership of this city and also the citizens of this city and how both those things go hand-in-hand for what you have for this place. Lord, we love you. We praise you. We glorify your name. Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Pastor, appreciate it. Thank you. What you have before you, tonight's agenda, I'd like to make one minor change to that, and that is, under ordinances and resolution, item number four. That was a resolution to adopt the master plan. Some modifications still need to be made to that, and Matt is also out tonight. So with council's permission, I'd like to move that to the 22nd of the month, next meeting, so those changes can be made. So with that minor change, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Support. Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. You also have the minutes from our last meeting, April 24. You've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to highlight going on? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I think we have it.
We did. All right. Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Tonight, for the bills, approximately $238,000. Dennis, anything you'd like to point out before we open it up for questions? Jane?
I have nothing.
Okay. Council members, any questions about any of the bills tonight? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $238,489.32?
So move.
Motion.
Support.
And support. Can we find our comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the role plays?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Okay. We have a couple of public hearings scheduled. Dennis, do you prefer to take the budget hearing before?
Public comment.
Or public comment first before? Okay. Is there anybody here tonight who'd like to address the council? Time for public comment. If so, come on up to the podium, give us your name, address. Tell us what you're thinking about this evening.
I didn't want to be first.
Mitch, welcome.
Maybe I'm a kid. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mitch Leachman. I live at 3963 Basswood Drive, and I am actually officially representing the Environmental Sustainability Committee tonight. That's an important point, because I've been before you before and made the disclaimer that I was not representing them. They met last week and unanimously supported what I want to talk to you about tonight, which actually spoke to you about two weeks ago as well, which is garlic mustard. But before I get into that, if you're okay with it, I'd like to bring up a partner in crime. Kay, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Because this way, you actually have two organizations talking to you about the same subject, because Kay is representing officially the Granville Community Tree Project.
Actually, Debbie Wim, I live at 3897 Edgewood Street, and I am on the Granville Community Tree Project Board. And I'm a former teacher, and I worked with garlic mustard for about nine years, taking kids out on play, space, education, for days. So have a little bit of knowledge.
So what happened since I was here last is a number of inspired folks put their heads together and said, let's do a community workday to address this particular problem plant in specific city parks, city property. I do have a bit of a handout, just eight copies. There's two pages for each. For those of you that may not be familiar with the plant, if you are familiar, you may or, you know, you may not feel compelled to need the handouts, but apologize, they are black and white, but if you're not familiar with the plant, I still think it will help just sort of give you a perspective. It is in bloom right now, and so one of the graphics is a pretty good shot of what the plant looks like in bloom. So for anyone that's out walking around, I think it will give you a real good opportunity to see just sort of how extensive this problem plant is. So I'm happy to answer questions, but the crux of it is, and I've been talking with Public Works, and we have a very solid outline for a work project Saturday morning, this coming Saturday. And this is a very easy thing to do, because you just literally pull the plant out of the ground. No chemicals required, no sharp objects. It's just about garbage bags and gloves, and of course, providing the right information to the volunteers in advance, so that they know what they're doing, and also ensuring that we have enough experienced leaders. And we would be taking, you know, groups of eight or 10 people at a time to different places, right? Providing them the adult supervision, making sure that they know what they're doing. And we're just looking for an A-OK. Charlie and Dennis thought it was pretty important that we talk to the council before we proceed, since I don't know that anything like this has been done before. So again, I'm happy to answer questions, and, you know, as we consider this for Saturday.
So this is on in city parks?
Exactly.
Okay.
Mill Race is our focus.
Okay.
Right? That's obviously one of the larger parks, if not the largest, and there's plenty of plant there for us to address.
Yeah. And so you've kind of coordinated with Charlie, and he knows where you're going to be, and Dennis, and so is it something that council needs to give approval on? Or, I mean, it sounds like a great idea. I love to pull garlic mustard. I know what it looks like. So what time is it, and how would we volunteer?
Yeah. So with council okay tonight, and then again, I'll continue to coordinate with Charlie, the idea is like 9:11, 9 to 11, Saturday morning. We'll meet at Mill Race, and we'll post it between the, again, organizations' Facebook pages. I'm sure we can get it onto the city's Facebook page, perhaps even a splash onto the website. But while we want to draw lots of attention to it, we will actually likely be doing registration to limit the numbers of people that come out, because of the nature of any volunteer project, you don't want to be overwhelmed, right? And then have people sort of running roughshod, not being supervised. But what I also want to emphasize in the retired, are you retired?
Yes.
The retired teacher would emphasize, again, the education and awareness potential here, right? We're going to do good work on Saturday in addressing the plant, but most especially, we want to spread the word as much as we can to the community at large about this plant.
Yeah, just kind of driving around, taking walks in the neighborhood. It is all over, in private yards and parks, so just to address it.
Okay. Dennis, are you looking for formal, or are we looking for formal approval, or just kind of a nod of the head acquiescence? Or, I mean, it sounds like a great idea to me, and especially if you've gone through Charlie and Dennis.
I think we're looking for a lack of objection, because, as you can imagine, any community events that are not managed by the city have their own little liabilities that we want to avoid. So we want to make it clear, this isn't a city event. But secondly, if we are going to partner with the group and help them with social media blasts and website information, I'd like it, I'd be more comfortable if the council was good with it, because then we don't have every organization around the area coming to us and wanting us to put their information up on the city's website. So it's just a formality, but I'm just looking for a lack of objection to this.
Any objection to this project?
I think it's a great idea. It's a real, real great community service. Thank you for leading.
Just out of curiosity, where do we put, I mean, do we put it in the dumpster by the cemetery, or you've got a spot to put all this stuff?
So these will literally go in the trash bags and into a landfill. This plant and its ability to reproduce and actually continue to grow, even after it's been pulled out of the ground, it needs to go in a trash bag into the trash system.
Okay. So hopefully, just a light rain maybe Friday night, so Saturday morning.
Oh, I'm loving it right now.
So Saturday morning, it's nice.
Getting some moisture in the soil, and yeah.
Over here, any?
Well, thanks for taking the initiative. Hopefully, assuming you're coordinating with Charlie and DPW about coming and picking up the trash bags and when they're done, so.
So we just look on the Facebook page for the Community Tree Project or the Environmental Sustainability for the details and registration?
Exactly. And again, we'll work with Marcy and city staff to ensure that it gets propagated as much as possible. If I may, while we're here, and Dennis kind of already sort of previewed this, I'd like for us to understand how best to proceed forward, so that we don't have to take up council time for future projects, because this is not going to be a one-and-done, not only with this plant, but because there are other invasive plants within the city and on city property that I'm confident these two groups will look to address in the future.
I think, like when we do the Buck Creek cleanup, we don't really come to council for approval. I mean, that's just, we talked to Charlie and coordinate with him to make sure we got the trash in the right places, so, yeah.
You know, when we talked about this at the Environmental Sustainability Committee last week, whenever it was, you know, I said, let's go for it. Let's go forward with it. And I understand Charlie's, you know, just let's pause, Dennis's pause, and let's, you know, for all the reasons Dennis said. Maybe like if the liaison of all the council members to each group, if there is an event like this, you know, going forward, maybe we can all just bring it back to council or just, you know, run it through the filter with Dennis and see, you know, just so, like you said, Mitch, we don't have to go through this process every time for every group. You know, Historical Society wants to do something with, I don't know, lead-based paint or something, you know, whatever, it doesn't matter. We don't have to go through this process every other week, you know, for council meeting.
I love being here. I love being here. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah. Is that a reasonable solution?
I think the difference here is new event and reoccurring event. So if the council, if this is a new event like it is tonight, and the council doesn't object to it, and it's a good one, and the next year, the group wants to do it again, yes, we can bypass that, because we already kind of know that. But a brand-new event, I'm a lot more comfortable if it's brought forward and the council blesses it, so to speak.
I think you've got our enthusiastic blessing on this event, so, great. Thank you very much. Thanks for taking care of it, and look forward to seeing you on Saturday morning.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else here who'd like to address the council? We've got a couple of public hearings coming up on other items, but anything else, just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, tell us what you're thinking about. Anybody? Okay. If not, we'll open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget. And Jane, great materials that you provided for us ahead of time, so thank you. We've run over it quite a few times, so making it very clear and concise. Thank you.
So this, this is a PowerPoint I kind of pirated from what you saw last year. It's basically highlighting all the things we've already talked about at our two budget workshops. I feel like this is more for the citizens that come, as well as you, but they haven't heard this before, so this is information that I feel needs to be disseminated in a public hearing, so that the citizens understand what's happening. So the first slide, general fund revenues, we do have any, we have no projected change from 2022. That will remain static at 11:05. The general fund revenue that that will generate is about $8.9 million. Of that, $250,000 is going to the street funding. And then our debt service requirements for the bond principal and interest payments for next year are roughly $680,000. We did have a very large taxable value increase this year, well, SEV increase this year, the 7.9% cost of living increase was capped at 5%. That's per the proposal A. And with new construction, it increased 6% overall. So that's where the majority of our tax will increase, our tax, property tax increase comes from. State shared revenue is coming in about 1.82. I checked again today. That number is still solid. It is an increase, not very much, $145,000 over last year. Was kind of hoping for a little more based on what the revenue conference shared, but it's more, so I'll take it. Court probation expense split is still the same. We are budgeting about $15,000 less than we did in 2022. Those numbers seem to be generally getting less and less. I don't know if that means there's less people in the system, but you can change the slide. Here's a nice comparative of taxable value versus state equalized value. This really shows what proposal A has done to our ability to tax ourselves. You can see that there's about $3.2 million in tax revenue left on the table, because we are only allowed to levy against taxable value, not against full state equalized value. So here's just a quick snapshot of an average taxable value based on the millage rate for next year. It looks like the city of Granville on an $80,000 home will get about $884. That is a very small percentage of the overall 3,0147.62 that will be levied on that particular property. And this is also non-homestead, so you don't see the big school 18 mills on that either. I kind of tailored it to an average taxpayer. Here's the total dollar allocation of the overall taxes. You can see city of Granville only gets 28% of what's levied. Schools typically get the biggest share of that pie. So general fund revenues by source, this is how the state breaks out our revenues. You can see that taxes, property taxes, are our biggest source of revenue at 71%, with the state coming in at 16%. And then everything else, intergovernmental sources are, you know, from other locals like the library or the school, or even the DDA is another government, so any revenue that we would get from them would get budgeted in there. Everything else is pretty similar to last year. Onto the general fund operating expenditures, as I said in the budget workshops, the two biggest asks this year are human capital and capital capital. Our operating or our operation expenses are pretty static. This is just a good outline of the things that staff has asked for. We've got the additional FTE for police and fire, an additional FTE for the parks, an administrative assistant part-time in the assessing department. You can see that the city cost for the cap is going up 4.1%. Check that again today. That's still static. We've got $767,000 in the general fund for required contributions for pension, and then we've got the 5% contractual wage increase for DPW that's on the table, and then for administrative staff. These are just a few of the bigger changes in the budget from last year to this year. I wanted to make sure that we highlighted all the new cost functions that are up there, trying to kind of morph our chart of accounts into something that is acceptable by the state. So you can see that the IT expenditures for general fund will all be housed in one cost function, as well as building and grounds. We'll now have a really good idea of what it costs us to maintain all of the buildings and grounds. The only thing that's not being included there are parks, library, and cemetery. Everything else is encompassed in that, except for clean water plant. The police, they've asked for some additional uniform allowance for the new staff that they hope to get, and the academy fees are also new in that function. Street lighting, brand-new cost function. We have been sort of housing that in a generic DPW cost function. Planning and zoning, there's a little bit of an increase in that particular function as the city managers, assistant city manager or city administrator, what's his title?
Manager.
Assistant city manager. A larger portion of his wages and benefits will now be charged to planning and zoning. Community development, that's another new cost function. It's got the cable TV and things for, like our seniors, we give money for our seniors, and then there are little things that the community likes to do, for instance, like the mustard thing, you know, that we get requests for trees and seeds and things like that. Historical commission also broken out. They get a report every month. It is something that is held out as a function by the state, so they'll have their own little cost function now. That'll be really nice for them. And then debt service, that is a new cost function in the general fund, because we are starting to pay back the installment purchase agreement for the fire pumper that we bought. Again, capital, that's another big ask. So just, we've had a little bit of information kind of come in since I did this particular PowerPoint. The capital expenditures are going to jump to about $4.5 million, as the aerial truck has now been delayed until next fiscal year. So the budget that I bring to you next week for adoption will have those numbers where they're supposed to be, but it's not included in here, because the PowerPoint was done before we found out this information. So you can just take a look, building and grounds, we're at, you know, we're asking for 1.9 million. The biggest spend would be on the fire station. We've got some HVAC and boiler work we need to do. The DPW garage floor needs to be redone, and then we've got some fencing and gate security for the police and court. We need new equipment for election, police department, we've got the laptops, the cruiser equipment and the tasers, the fire department, same thing, in-car laptops, general operating equipment that we need to replace on a rotating basis. We're looking at for a trailer and motor for the rescue boat, and then to replace some very old and outdated chairs and tables at the fire station. Cemetery, they're asking for about $71,000 for paving, irrigation improvements. They'd like to take that chapel down and put some electricity in the pole barn. Parks, we all know that the majority of parks is the ARPA money. That's, we're looking to spend that this year. A portion of it is being spent in 2023. The majority of it will be spent in '23, '24. And then we are also looking to make, do, make some ground on the heritage park dock and walkway and the playground and backboards for that park. And then the library, KDL would like them to get a new book drop, and so in order for them to get their new book drop, we got to have the hole in the side of the building modified, which that's our responsibility. The book drop is being provided by KDL. Here's a slide I don't know that you've seen before. I like to show this for comparatives. Again, it's a little skewed because of that one, the capital that's going in next year versus this year, but you can see the majority of our organization's expenditures are in personnel services, which is wages and fringes. The next largest category is capital outlay. That's driven by requests, ARPA money, things like that, and then other charges and services, contracted services, utilities, all of those things that you can't put in a shopping bag and walk out with. And then supplies and debt service is the smallest portion, which is good, because we want to be low users of stuff. Slide on the American Rescue Plan Act, our approved projects, we're the pedestrian bridge. We checked that off the list this year. Pickleball courts are coming in the summer. The playgrounds, they're making way for those now. And then the Little League bathroom with the ADA upgrades, that should be completed as well before, I think, before fall? Yep. Okay. Okay. The fire truck purchase, this is kind of a new thing that we need to be thinking about. It really wasn't talked about a lot during any of the budget workshops, because we didn't really know how much insurance reimbursement we were going to get, if there was a truck available. We've had a little movement on that in the last...
Six hours.
Six hours? So it's very likely that even though this is not currently in the budget to replace this vehicle in '23, '24, because we weren't sure how quickly we could get a vehicle, based on information that we've received, it's possible that we could be coming back to you and asking for additional funding to replace that vehicle if there, one becomes available. It's a, it's kind of a roll of the dice, I think.
It's still pretty fluid. This, we started to get actionable, actionable information last week, Friday, and it continues to go out today, today, so probably in a couple of weeks, we'd be able to talk about it with a little bit more authority than we are prepared to do right now.
I don't think, I don't think we'll know much more before you're asked to approve the '23, '24 budget, but we will at least have a direction that we can get you to start thinking about things. Projected fund balance, everybody always likes to know what our, you know, projected fund balance for the end of the year. If we do adopt this budget, what's it going to look like? This is our best guess. Our fund, the biggest dart throw on this particular slide is the beginning-of-year projected fund balance. So that would be what our fund balance is starting July 1. That's very fluid until the end of the year. It could be higher than that, which would increase our projected fund balance based on the budget that we're asking you to adopt. It could be lower than that, but it's not going to be much different than what you see. So again, more capital, road projects, 1.6 million. We've got the Fairlands Project, Prairie, Chicago Drive, the Ottawa Project, White Street, and Ivan Rest. And the Chicago Drive is the project that has a water main that goes along with it, but I think that, no? Which one is the water main? Oh, I got that wrong. Ivan Rest, which is at the bottom?
No. There's no water main project.
There's no water main project? Oh, okay. So we can cross that out. And then we've got signal upgrades, $220,000 of signal upgrade, upgrades, one at Chicago Drive and Canal, and the other one at Chicago Drive and Fairlands. We're doing one this year too, right?
Mm-hmm.
No, a signal upgrade?
We're doing Chicago Drive this year.
This year? Okay. Okay. Major streets funding, it's mostly us, or mostly state aid. So when we do a big project, we like to try to get grant funding from either the state or federal government. You can see that that very rarely happens. We got some in 1819, got a little bit in '23, '24, and we're hoping to get more in '24, '25, or '23, '24. Local street, oh, that's okay. You can keep going. Local streets, this is the fund that the general fund is going to contribute to this year, the $250,000, which will allow us to have $557,000 worth of local streets improved over the next 12 months? Yes? Okay. And then here's the local streets funding. You can see we're in competition with the state for who's going to pay more for our local streets. Many years, the general fund has covered more than what the state aid or state Act 51 money covers. However, that fund has also been building up a fund balance, so this year, we've budgeted less to come from general fund. We get our fund balance under We get our fund balance under control. Those are, those are funds that you don't want a 15%. You want to spend what you're given. The state tends to allocate more to units that are willing to spend what they're given. So we're hoping to get that down to a reasonable fund balance, and then we'll look at next year and make sure that everything is properly funded. The clean water plant, we've got increased ready-to-serve charges and our commodity, we're going from $3.02 per 1,000 gallons to $3.23 per 1,000 gallons, and our ready, our ready-to-serve charges are going from $1,596 to $1,708, and that is an additional cost of $4.27, 27 cents per quarter. So that's about $17 a year for increased sewer processing. They have some major capital purchases coming up. Their aeration system, they're looking to do the blowers, tank valves, and the mixing modifications, which we're hoping to have scheduled as soon as possible. We'll be, I think they're going to be talking about that later tonight. And then they have additional capital purchases, more of motors and other capital of $84,000. The water fund, our increases to commodity and ready-to-serve charges, 304 to 335. Ready-to-serve is going from 22.35 to 24.6. What that means is $24.60 quarterly, that's addition, that's additional cost of $6.90 per quarter, which again is about 28 bucks per quarter, uh, a year. So the thing you need to know about the water fund is Wyoming has increased their water rates by 13%. We talked about this at one of the budget workshops. We're trying not to do the increase all at once. We're doing a smoothing process. We're going to increase it this much this year, see where we fall out with how we look projecting out, and if necessary, do another, maybe more than normal increase next year to make sure that we have the proper net position at the end of the year. The major prop, uh, capital projects over there, Ivan Rest? I have this on here, but you just said we're not doing that.
We are doing Ivan Rest, but it's, it's been postponed till spring of 24.
Spring of 24, okay. So that's, so that's the major water main project, and then meter replacements. We're trying to do a big push and get those done before technology catches up with us, and we gotta do it again. Here's our comparable utility rates. We're still at the bottom. Georgetown is the only other local unit in our comparable list that is lower than we are, so I feel really good about what we charge our citizens and what they get for, for their payment. The motor pool is the last fund. Again, capital, 686,000, patrol vehicles, a mark staff, a police staff vehicle, we've got the fire department vehicle, a dump truck, a backhoe, utility tractor, leaf blower, striping unit, and tire changer. So a lot of little things on this list this year, but it still adds up. So that's my PowerPoint presentation.
Great presentation, questions?
You've heard it before. It's nice to see pictures. Is anything that I said tonight caused you concern or raises any questions, things we maybe didn't go over before, things that weren't clear?
Jane, you stole this presentation from the last one. Maybe we'll update the photo for the next one.
Sure.
I'm just kidding.
No, I don't have a problem with that. Maybe we'll take a picture of our newly renovated...
We got a new sign too.
Our new fire station.
Yeah. Great presentation, thank you very much.
Yes, my pleasure.
I do have a question. It's not really budget-related, so I don't expect you to know it, Jane, but about Georgetown Township and their water, where's their source? Do they get it from Wyoming or Grand Rapids or somewhere else?
Water, Iowa.
They do get it from Wyoming, so they, they're gonna have to bump it up then too.
Uh huh. Again, I, these are current year rates that I've compared to. They, some, some of the units have already pushed out what they're going to be charging next year, but, are you going backwards? Yeah. These were their actual rates, and so what I tried to do is compare our actual to their actuals, and it, even with our increase, we're still falling below what their actuals were last year.
Yeah, so I know in the budget work session, you discussed a lot about these new cost functions and had a lot of transparency to the budget, and so I really appreciated that. Something that I'm still kind of wondering on is the fire station, the 1.6 million dollars. That just seems to me like a very large sum of money in comparison to previous budgets and such that is being expended. And I know in the work session notes, it had listed that we would maybe discuss increased revenue or bonding or something for that, but then we never really did discuss that. So I'm just kind of wondering if you can, for my own peace of mind, go back a little bit and explain, how did that, how did this large chunk of money appear? You know, appear in the budget by the restructuring and such to allow us to expend more funds this time?
So from my best judgment, what I'm seeing is your fund balance has been growing. It was at 73% at the end of last fiscal year, and the reason it's growing is because we're planning to do things like fix the fire station, and then it doesn't get done. And so that funding just continues to carry forward. And so even though we ended the year with a 73% fund balance, we will probably end this year with something close to 40%, maybe a little higher. It's, it's the revenue coming in and the revenue that you've saved or the fund balance that you've saved that allows us to do these larger projects. We had in this year's budget, $550,000 budgeted to do the roof. It, it's costing way more than $550,000, so that's not going to be spent this year. We're not spending it on something else, we're just holding that and moving it into next year. So we basically have half of it saved already by not spending it this year and choosing to not spend it on something else instead.
And your point is that it generates greater scrutiny if people are looking, saying, why are you sitting on all of these dollars that you've taxed residents for?
Exactly, exactly. And that's why paying attention to your, that's why we have a fund balance policy that dictates what our percentage is, because the money that we take in needs to be funneled back out into the community in one way or another. And so fire station, it's risen to the top. We can't ignore it anymore. You want to talk about funding, that's a really good topic. My personal feeling on a governmental unit is if you have the ability to pay for it or the ability to raise revenue to pay for it, you should never borrow. That's, borrowing is, you're just basically giving money away when you borrow. So if you have the money to pay for it, or if you have the ability to raise revenue to pay for it, those are your first two go-tos. Borrowing is, is, unless you don't have $14 million to build a new, you know, expansion on your clean water plant, which we didn't, that puts us in a position where we're required to borrow. So, does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Merrick, could I also add, if there's any confusion as to what that 1.6 million dollars is paying for? I know chief is tired of going through this, but in my education with the chief, the water leaking issues have been a topic of work for a long time now, and that's the 550. That has ballooned because of material costs, and as you can imagine, it's closer to a million dollars in 550. And then there's also another project that would address a lot of other routine maintenance stuff for that building that we're going to all try to do together to save some money, so we're not doing two separate facility projects. Did I kind of hit that on the, okay?
Yeah, basically, 1 million of the 1.6 is the roof that we've talked about for, for years now, and as everyone has said, post-COVID, inflationary, everything that's happened, that basically skyrocketed from 300,000 and change to half a million and change up to nearly a million dollars. The 0.6 million, or 600,000 dollars is additional work that was identified in the engineer's report that needed to be done, not as urgently as the roof, but should be done as soon as possible afterward. Some of it was work that Charlie had identified as made necessary, and other things were from the report, so it's two separate buckets of work. We're hoping to save some money by trying to do as much of it at once as is feasible.
Yeah, I had a question kind of along this same line, and I don't have my budget workbook in front of me right now, but of the 1.6, is that all a cash expenditure? Because I think in the original document we got, it said potential bonding for some of it, or are we paying for all of it?
So the word bonding hasn't been in my vocabulary for any of this budget process. I don't believe that we should be borrowing for anything that we're spending.
So this is a purely cash expenditure?
This is, we're, we're expending fund balance.
Okay.
So yes, we are paying out more than we are taking in, in 23, 24. However, we need to do that because it's been set aside and set aside and set aside. And when you set aside funds, you don't want to use it for something else, because hey, look, we have this extra money. You want to use it for what the original plan was. And so I looked at past capital improvement plans, and the fire department roof just kept getting bigger and bigger, the dollar amount every year. So at some point, you have to do that project or tear the building down and start over. I mean, that's, that's kind of where we are.
And to add to that, which is kind of, it, it's not interesting, it was a little funny, but we vetted it, we vetted the source of funding for this project for a while. We got Jane into a room by herself and peppered her with questions on why we can't borrow money, why we can't borrow money. And so at the end of that, we're all convinced and satisfied that we can pay cash for it, we can be, continue on as a sustainable operation, and we don't have to go that third choice, which is to borrow money. So we're very comfortable with the route we're taking.
Again, remember, the budget is, it's, it's just a guideline. It is morphing and changing as the year goes on. We do our best to project how much things are going to cost, how much we're going to need. Things happen. Nope, the roof isn't 1 million, it's 1.5 million. Okay, what aren't we going to do this year? What can we do differently? How can we get this project done? Then you, you back up and you regroup and you try to figure out what you can push, what you can't push. Do you raise revenue in the next year to make up the difference in your fund balance? If we fall, we're going to use fund balance, you know, we're under 15%. Next year, you talk about what we don't spend or how we raise more revenue. Because until we've spent it all and we have no ability to raise revenue anymore, that's when you borrow. Or you can't afford $14 million.
Okay, great. Thanks for a good presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got a quick question. So the fire truck replacement?
Yeah.
The fire truck that was unfortunately totaled out. So our insurance is only covering a portion of the cost to replace that?
Yep.
Are we not going after the, the at-fault party's insurance to try to recoup the other part of that cost?
Yeah, good question. Chief?
We are. I don't know how likely that is to be successful, and I don't know the timing. This is some of the information that just started to come in Friday morning, but our insurance is making a claim against the responsible party's insurance for, they have a term for basically the difference between what they're willing to pay and what...
What it would cost to replace it.
...the actual value for that vehicle is.
Okay, so I'm glad they were pursuing that option. I don't think we talked about that before, so I just was curious if...
Yeah. That's just brand-new information.
Yeah, like Friday morning.
Okay.
So that is one, that is one option.
All right. Keep us posted on that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
What was that difference, chief? About 200, 250,000?
Yeah, we're thinking 285 and change is what our insurance is willing to pay, and they're thinking that today's replacement value for the vehicle is probably going to be 400 to 450,000.
Good, thanks for a great presentation.
Yes.
All right. Let's, is there a motion to open the public hearing on the budget?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say yes.
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 In the opposition, please say no. Right, anybody here tonight like to speak about the budget? Time to discuss that during this public hearing? If you have any comments or questions, please come to the podium, give us your name and Okay, I don't see a rush up here. Great, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Next item is a public hearing on alley vacation. We've talked about this quite a few times, and this is the one, remember, where some trees were taken down? And trees are all down that need to be done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any other background you'd like to give us? I mean, we've talked about it quite a few times.
No, this is a, this is a second opportunity for public hearing. We already had one public hearing on this matter, and that's where the tree issue came up, and since that time, that is the only communication that we have.
Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the alley vacation?
Some move.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Anybody here tonight would like to address the council during this public hearing on the alley vacation? It's the one that goes east-west, north of 30th Street. Welcome. If you could just give us your name and address, that'd be great.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deana Keel. I reside at 2940 Vermont Avenue Southwest, proudly Granville, and the trees have come down. The communication was very well received by all neighbors and parties that received that service. Thank you very much. My neighbors are celebrating their 13th wedding anniversary, so they could not be here tonight, and that is Nicolette and Dan Briggs, and so we celebrate with them in their teenage marriage. And secondly, the question that we both had, yes, accumulation, was when the eight feet is given to each of the property owners? One, is the property resurveyed? And second, will the deeds be updated? And is that our response, or is that a city's response in response to that? So those were the two questions we only had, and I was hoping to receive the answer.
That sounds like a Randy question. I don't know, or a Donna's question.
I, I don't believe the city's under any obligation to survey anything in that regard. It's a recorded plat, and, and it is what it is, so to speak. So I wouldn't expect the city would, would survey the property. And your second question had to do with...
The property description update for the deed, yes.
No, that, that's likely something that'll get picked up by the title company if you sell your property or if you mortgage your property, et cetera.
Correct, but if that property is also put into a trust for special needs adults, so to speak, it would need to be updated as well, and there's a couple other family members online.
Yeah, that would be your responsibility then if you want to do that that way.
Okay.
But otherwise, it would be picked up by the title companies when, when some activity occurs with regard to that property.
All right. Well, that answers my question thoroughly, and we want to thank you very much. And the other question that we had is, when you're showing this, per ADA regulations, if you could enlarge it for those who are visually impaired during the PowerPoint presentation, you can actually use the widescreen version. That would be really helpful, because I couldn't even see it. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, thank you for the comments and suggestions. Anybody else here like to address the council about the alley vacation? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Support. And support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. So Marcy, this is resolution number 3308? Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3308? That's a resolution vacating an alleyway located in the city of Granville?
Some, support.
Motion support. Any discussion, comments?
I just want to thank city manager and Charlie for attending to the tree issue.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
It's done quickly too, so yeah. Very much appreciate it. Marcy, would you call the rule, please?
Councilmember Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Next item is a, a couple resolutions regarding on and off premises tasting room permit. I don't know who is here. Teresa, if you want to talk about that, or got some, somebody along with you that would like to talk about that?
We do. So I just want to take a moment to introduce Tom Feeny and Bill Simes. They are the current owners of Harbor Light Brewery, founders and owners of Harbor Light Brewery in South Haven. If you have not been, you certainly need to go. Scott and I stopped there last week. It's amazing, and not just because of what they're doing there, there's a feeling... There's a feeling, there's an atmosphere, there's, um, it's more than just a brewery. Um, Tom has quite a bit of history with Granville, um, with the public schools, his children going through there. Um, and they have leased the property at 4051 Chicago Drive. They're opening a brewery here, which is huge for our downtown. Um, they have been amazing to work with. They're renovating the entire space, um, looking to hopefully open the end of the summer, beginning of fall. Um, and so, what we need from city council tonight is for these permits to be signed off on so they can submit all of their paperwork to the state. Um, so I don't know, Tom or Bill, which of you would like to come up and, um, answer questions and talk a little bit about your vision, but we're super excited to have them joining us here.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Tom Feeny, uh, I'm a resident of Byron Center. However, my children attended Granville High School. I was the, uh, hey, Bill.
I'm Bill Siames, uh, currently live in Fenville, kind of spent most of my time in Grand Haven though, but with Tom owning the brewery down in South Haven.
There's an interesting sport called rugby and we met over 30 years ago playing rugby together. And because of a number of, uh, incidents that happened and coincidences, we ended up becoming reunited in our waning stage of our professional careers and decided to own, open a brewery in, in South Haven. Um, with, uh, with regard to Granville, I live in Byron Center, so I'm very familiar with the community to the north of Byron Center, but I was also the rugby coach at Granville High School for nine years, '09 through '17. And, uh, we're, we're very successful. And I was very, very proud to be a part of that whole athletic program and so forth. I, I stepped down in 2017 to build out the brewery in South Haven and, and that's what we're doing right now. We're very successful in what we do. We brought a vision, uh, of family environment, uh, space in, in what we do. Bill has been brewing for over 30 years and we have a product that's very, very palatable for many. We also, uh, make, uh, ciders and we have seltzers. We also make our own sodas as well for the kids. So, it's very much a family environment. We encourage the families to come in. Our South Haven location does not serve food. We collaborate with the local restaurants and there's two restaurants that do deliver food to the brewery. So, that's how we do it now. At the, uh, Chicago Drive location, we are looking for a partner to put a restaurant in that location and in, in the event that we do not have that opportunity, uh, when we open, then we will utilize a food truck option, which I believe has been utilized before in the community and has been successful. We are working diligently now to, uh, remodel the, uh, the environment and hopefully, as Teresa said, we are planning to open up in, in late summer and, and early fall. And if you have any questions, both Bill and myself will be happy to answer them.
Great. Questions, uh, regarding these applications?
I was just curious on the name. I see you guys are using a different name for the Granville location than you use in South Haven. Can you talk a little bit about, about that or?
As a matter of fact, I can. In doing a little bit of research in Granville and so forth and the history of Granville, because we are so community minded, uh, we thought, what can we do to tie in, uh, what we would like to share? How we tie that in and cause residents to be, feel that, that, that they have a vested interest in, in the, uh, the brewery as well and so forth. So, in doing some history and some research, I went to the library, picked up some books, read about that and learned that Oakstown was the very first name for the city prior to Granville and that was in 1830s. Uh, so, we have elected to call it Oakstown Brewery.
That's great.
Question, I should probably know the answer to it, but so these are for on and off premises tasting rooms. So, is there manufacturing or you do the manufacturing someplace else?
Wow, this is, I'm, I'm going to make this very short. I was coached by my wife to say very short. Anyhow.
We all appreciate that. As you'll learn.
So, there are two things going on here. One, we have a brewer's license that we are extending for, for the beer. The requirements of the state are that we manufacture at least 50% of the product onsite. So, with that, we are putting in a brewing system to meet that need. We also make ciders. Ciders are fruit-based alcohol that requires a winery's license. Well, the winery allows us to have an off-site tasting room permit. Hence, we can manufacture the product in South Haven and bring it here to Granville to serve. Whereas with the brewery permit, we have to manufacture at least 50% of it that's served here. The other 50% could be made at the South Haven location and transported here for sale.
Okay.
Short suite?
Well done.
Okay.
So, just a quick question about that. So, along with that, are you planning on using the same menu of, uh, beer that you sell in South Haven here in Granville? Or are you going to be doing some new things here in Granville since you'll be brewing on site?
We, we have a number of wonderful opportunities here in Granville. Fortunately for us, Bill has over 50 recipes that he's launched in South Haven. We have a very, very, um, we have an eclectic following of people, patrons that come because South Haven is such a tourist town. There are a lot of Chicago-led people that, that live there as well. So, we, we've leaned the product to, uh, serve many, many palettes. Bill, uh, caters to the styles of beer and there are many different styles from your stouts to your Pilsners to your lagers, all the way, all the way through. So, we have a number of varieties. So, the short answer to your question is yes. We'll have other varieties here in, in Granville, unique to Granville.
We'll, we'll be starting out with a lot of the same beers, uh, brewed either here or in the South Haven location. But, yeah, I plan on developing a lot of, uh, specialty beers, one-offs, making staples here that are specifically, you know, designed and meant to be at this location rather than the South Haven location.
Very good. Thank you.
Tom, what, in your, in your perfect world, what kind of a restaurant partner are you looking for? Are you, is it pizza? Is it a, a full service? Is it barbecue? Does it matter?
The environment, uh, that both Bill and I enjoy are the, the cafe style, the beer garden, the, the pub, the tavern, things like that. So, we would lean toward sandwich-esque. Uh, pizzas are, are okay as well. But, uh, yeah, it could be, could be anything. Probably not, I don't think you'll find linen in the brewery.
If, if you know the space, there is a kitchen attached, which we won't be using. But, once it gets cleaned up and, and finished off and everything, we're hoping to get someone who wants to utilize that space and serve right in the, uh, our taproom. So, it'll be our taproom, but we have no problem with, and anybody else could bring food in also. That's, uh, part of the, the, the way a lot of breweries work is, we don't serve food, but you can bring your own in or have it delivered.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much. Um, looking forward to having you in downtown Granville.
Looking forward to serving you.
So, I noticed in these resolutions, Marcy, it makes reference to, um, the licenses that they currently have, like the microbrewery and, and, uh, so what you're looking for is this two resolutions. One is resolution number 3309 and that's for the new on-premises tasting room permit.
Correct, and that's for the brewery license.
So, is there a motion to adopt that resolution number 3309?
Some support.
Motion and support. Any other questions or comments? Marcy, would you call the role on that, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next item is our resolution number 3310 and that's for the new on pre, off premises tasting room license. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
Some support.
Motion and support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Well, thank you very much. We look forward to having you here.
Thank you. We don't have to ban anybody from the brewery.
You invite us when you open.
Those first beers on me.
And I'm, and I'm glad that you know our development. Director Teresa, she's fabulous. Any questions? I don't know. She'll get you very much involved in the community.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the consent agenda. And this would be in the best interest of the city. We have, uh, adoption would be. Uh, we have some reports, the police and treasurers report from April, some, uh, March minutes from the park and rec board, the environmental sustainability committee, April, uh, minutes, and the downtown development authority, April 13 minutes, as well as the historical and library board minutes. Also, an agreement, uh, with Trans Union, Alternative Data Solutions. And a resolution number 3311, Protecting Michigan Pension Grant Program. Now, I did have a question about that, but before we get into that, is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
Some move.
Motion?
Support.
Yeah, support. Okay, so, kind of what's the Reader's Digest version? Jane, it looks like you know exactly what that is, so.
So, the Reader's Digest version of the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant Program is the federal government has made, um, funds basically available. And if you remember in the beginning, when you're talking about ARPA, you cannot spend it on your pension. You cannot pay it on your liability. Can't, you can't, you can't. Well, they've changed their mind and now they've made funding available across the country to help local units get their pensions to be at a funded level per the state that they're in. So, the state of Michigan is pushing money out to local units who are under 60% funded. They sent out a list, they sent out the list saying who qualified, what their percentage funding was and those people are allowed to either dispute whether or not they're on the list and apply for the grant. In order to apply for the grant, we have to have a resolution that says that the council approves Dennis as the person to apply for that particular grant. As you all know, when you apply for any federal money, they have all these hoops that you have to jump through. This is the beginning. And so, while we are not all that grossly underfunded, I think we're right around 58% funded, we still stand to be able to get about $250,000 to push toward our pension and bring us to 60%. So, I'm, I'm asking that we pursue this.
No downside, right?
I like the amount.
No downside.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
There is one downside.
Is there?
When we had the meeting with MERS, they, they were talking about this program, but the only downside, and it's not that big a deal, is that cities typically will have to go into a, what do they call it? It's a program to rectify the situation, right?
So, there are certain things that you need to do. You guys have already done it. I mean, one of the things in order to get money to hand, to, to deal with your, and, and it would be the same if we refund. If we restow bonds and become 100% funded, we would have to agree to close our defined benefit plan, which we have already done. So.
Great. Sounds good luck. Hope you got it all.
Yeah, me too.
All that you asked for.
I'm going to try.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Justin.
Um, so this isn't on that, um, but on the library board minutes, we voted in the last library board meeting to amend the bylaws and bring that to the city council. Um, that would allow the chairperson to serve an unlimited number of terms so long as voted by a majority of the board. And the reason for that is because our current board chair has served longer than the bylaws permit and no one realized it until someone went to the bylaws. But we don't have anyone clamoring to take over that role. So, that person would like to continue in that position and there's no objection from the rest of the board. So, we'd like to amend our bylaws. So, I don't know if we can take that up within this or do this separately or what, but I would like to bring attention to that.
Separately, I think.
Separately, okay. So, I'll do a motion after that consent.
Okay.
Okay.
I did have one question, um, for Chief Anglom. In your report, it showed there was a period in April that your calls were just huge, like 35 calls a day average and, which is a lot more than normal. Is that a trend that you're seeing generally?
The funded total, we ended up at 29 calls per day, which was pretty high. Generally follows the weather. We had a nice warm spike. People get a little more active and our crime rates, uh, or our activity rates, not all crime-related, uh, increases, but I thought that was a significant deviation from the norm and that's why it was included in the report.
Well, it's good to know that. I know, uh, chief mayor, number, uh, several years ago, we talked about the number, just, just the huge increase in number of calls for service for EMS. That's, seems to have stayed up there, so.
Yeah, we continued to, to increase. I mean, we got a lot COVID-related, but we came out of that in a vengeance and surpassed those previous numbers and we're up to 2,200, 2,300 here now.
Yeah, just even more confirms, um, your request and for additional personnel, so. Okay. Any other comments on, uh, consent agenda? Uh, if not, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. So, Justin, did you want, or, uh, did you want to make?
Yeah, um, so as I told the library board, this is like uncharted territory for me to be calling for an end to limited terms because I generally support term limits, um, on things. But I do think that, um, you know, on a community board in which you have people who express interest in serving and no one else really wants that role, it makes sense to allow that person to continue to serve. So, um, I would make a motion that we, um, accept the library board's, um, request that we amend their bylaws to allow a chairperson to serve unlimited terms so long as voted by a majority of the board.
So, support for that motion?
Support.
Any discussion or questions? Motion support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. City manager's report. I think, uh, Dennis, I don't know if you wanted to introduce it, but the clean water plant, aeration mixing improvement. I, I know we have Brian and Scott here tonight to talk about.
Yes, Scott's going to do a little bit of a presentation. We also have Brian here that's going to, uh, hopefully be able to answer any questions.
Great.
Uh, good evening, council, um, mayor. As you know, the clean water plant has got a pretty extensive asset management program and we're constantly looking at capital improvement. One of those areas that we have recently identified over the last few years is the blower system of our process. This is the backbone of our biological process for all the water treatment. Anytime we're looking at those areas, we look at and work with more in brujing on how can we improve efficiencies? How can we give us, ourselves more operational flexibility? With that, we identified a number of aeration tank modifications. One of those being this Envirmix system that we've been talking about during budget a little bit. Um, those of you that went on the tour, we talked a little bit about it and it's a horse bubble mixing system that'll go in some of the aeration tanks. With that and the way currently lead times are with equipment and things of low that nature, we've been looking at going into a design build aspect instead of a design bid build aspect for this project. The equipment has to be installed inside the tanks and we can only really take those tanks down and affect the biological processes in the summertime. With long lead times and only being able to work with it on the summertime, we've came up with a solution of how we can do that work potentially this summer. And it'll be a phase one basically of this blower project that we've been talking about. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Brian to kind of talk about how we worked about the qualifications and the process of design.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Um, so, a little different process maybe than you guys are, are used to here. Uh, generally, we do the design bid then build. Uh, in this case, we elected to go for a design build process and in order to select a contractor and make sure that the city was getting the best benefit, we went to a qualifications-based selection for the contractor. So, we sent out, uh, qualifications package to, um, four, uh, local mechanical contractors that we've worked with in the past, both at our facility as well as the city. Um, one was busy enough where they elected not to, uh, participate in the bid process. We got bids from three other ones and then we went through a review process and qualified those. So, we looked at, uh, generally the contractor information. Were they capable of bonding for the project? Uh, the timeline and the reference list that they provided, timeline being, uh, The timeline and the reference list that they provided, timeline being a pretty critical component of that as well, and then the relationship with the city of Granville. And we were able to rank those particular contractors that bid on that and try to select the best one that would meet the city's needs. So, who we selected was Franklin Hallward Company. And some of the items that stood out in theirs were, they're actually currently working at the clean water plant now on the large project that's going on down there for the solids handling system. They've also worked really well with the staff through that project, as well as with us as the engineers. Secondly, they've had the most experience with the design-build methodology of the firms that we looked at and contractors that we looked at. And also, they've got experience with the particular type of equipment that we're looking to put inside this basin, so they had the most experience with that, and therefore, we ranked them the highest. So, the next step for us is basically to enter into a contract with them and allow them to begin the procurement process of this enviramix equipment to be able to get it in the tanks during the timeline that we're looking at. Slightly different, but that's why we're here to answer any of the questions and make sure that you guys are.
Any questions for Brian or Scott? So, I think what we would do is do two different motions. One will be conditionally awarding the design-build contract to Franklin Hallward, and the condition is review by, review and approval by the city attorney.
Correct.
And that would be in an amount not to exceed one-point-six million dollars.
Correct.
And then also, then we would be looking to do approval for the entire budget, just two-hundred thousand dollars more, so a million eight for the whole budget. And this, of course, any, both approvals would be in the best interest of the city. So, is there a motion to enter into the design-build contract with Franklin Hallward subject to city attorney's review and approval in an amount not to exceed maximum price of one-point-six million dollars?
So.
Motion, support. And support. Any other questions, comments? It's great you can get it done this year. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Now, is there a motion to approve the total estimated budget of one-point-eight million dollars as prepared by Morin Brujink?
So.
Motion, support. And support. Questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Galdarlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dennis, discussion use of property at thirty-four oh eight thirty-fourth Street, the newly acquired property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council previously approved the purchase of the property, and the main benefit for that in the interest of the city was to add to our park property just south of the cemetery and include that as part of the project that has been already scheduled. When that approval happened, there were a couple counselors that were absent that evening, and now we are preparing to split that, the house portion of the property, and to put that up for sale, to have a new homeowner move into that house, and also to attempt to recover some of the funds that we used initially to purchase the property. Before we do that, though, I wanted to give the council one opportunity to talk about this one more time and confirm that we are going to put the property up for sale. Or another alternative would be to hold on to that property and use it maybe for a future parking lot or future circuit, fitness circuit, or something that would be an additional amenity to the trail. We could be creative at anything to add there, but first and foremost, I wanted to confirm with the council that they want to sell the property. In preparation for the meeting, I asked Morin Brujink to do a quick little mock-up so that you could see scale-wise what a parking amenity would look there, look like in that same spot, and they're estimating about twenty-five spots that they could probably make room for along Buck Creek.
Council, what are your thoughts on that? I know there is somebody, the person who had bid on the property also originally is still interested in purchasing the property. I don't know at what price. You know, one of the sketches shows some parking. I was chatting with Dennis this morning, and you know, maybe it's not parking, but maybe it's, you know, a bit of playground equipment or something there and knocking the house down. There's probably, you know, between Wayburn and Ivan Rest and Prairie and Thirty-fourth Street, I'm guessing, I don't know, a hundred houses or something. That might be a nice place where people could walk and have just a little playground equipment. Or we could sell the house, yeah. Thoughts, Tim?
Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't at the meeting due to being out of town, and I do want to say I appreciated the quick response of council and city manager and mayor for finding this property and orchestrating the purchase of it. I think it's a great buy, and I understand the reasoning to try to recoup a little money and put the house back up for sale, but I would advocate for keeping the property and not selling it. In my three and a half, my brief three and a half years on council, we've talked about buffer zones for Buck Creek, extending the Buck Creek Trail all the way east to the Kent Trails. We've talked always about expansion of parks and green space. And in fact, in the draft of the Granville Master Plan on page seventy under the Buck Creek Protection Overlay, it talks about the property between Ivan Rest Avenue and the cemetery on Thirty-fourth Street. There are several homes. These homes are planned to remain in place, but if the opportunity arises, the city should consider acquiring the property to convert it to protected, open space along the floodplain. Further, no additional housing density should be permitted beyond what already exists in the lots in the overlay. I have this vision of not only buying that property, but looking at the other five or six going eastward to Ivan Rest and envision that being part of a trail, of a protected space going further east toward the Kent Trails. So, I would advocate keeping the property and, you know, and the parking lot idea. If that park becomes a popular place, you know, I don't think it's gonna be a real popular thing with the homeowners on Thirty-fourth Street for all the cars parking on the curbs either. So, it gives us an option of putting a parking lot in depending on the popularity of the park. Those are my thoughts.
Jared, thoughts?
Yeah, you know, Tim, the meeting that you were in at, it happened very quickly, and I treated that more like a math class, and we said, does the math make sense to purchase this property? What do we gain from it? Can we avoid having to spend extra dollars on a bridge? The math worked out, even if we sold or didn't sell that parcel or sectioned it off. I'm in agreeance with you, Tim, on holding off on that. It doesn't mean we can't sell it in the future, but maybe we pump the brakes on this pause and think, how does this fit into the master plan? How's this fit into our green infrastructure, especially that trailway there? So, I concur with you, Tim.
Other thoughts? Randy?
I'm writing them down. Yeah, kind of along councilperson's Vanderwall's thought. I mean, my assumption is that we can reuse that bridge, and it is safe. And I don't know if we've had that inspected or are we good to go with that? That's, okay.
There's some things we'll have to do, but it is safe.
Okay, and then I guess my second thought is, I mean, I don't mind keeping the property. I don't know if we need to make a decision like tonight, but my assumption would be, even if we sold the property, we would still have to maintain some kind of an easement over some of that space so we could get to the bridge, so we could still protect our interest. I mean, down the road, if you did want to sell it, you could move that parking lot to the west. You could make it half the size. I don't know. I'm just saying we could create some kind of an easement to potentially protect our interest in the future, so I just wanted to throw that out there for what it's worth.
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
To that point, councilmember, if you look on the map that I gave you with the parking lot, you see where the three numbers, vertical numbers are? I can't read them. My eyes are eighteen, twenty-four, and eighteen.
Yes.
If you take that line and just draw a line from the trailway down to Buck Creek, that is approximately where our surveyor has laid out the new survey line for the property on the split, and our intention would be to take the paved trail from the bridge entrance straight up to connect with the trailway there.
Yeah.
And to, Charlie and I have already talked about a couple of amenities in addition to what we're going to do to retrofit the bridge to bring, you know, safety railings, but also continue a traditional look to that bridge. So, we could do that there, and we would eliminate the asphalt that goes through the front yard, because we don't think that's a, you know, a positive selling point to the property to have the trail. And we would be accessing the bridge when we need to do maintenance, either through the cemetery where we currently do maintenance or from Thirty-fourth Street along the trailway. So, that's the thinking today if we were to split this off and sell it.
You know, and I was in Florida when this happened, and the opportunity presented itself, and I think you guys did the right thing and, you know, jumped on it. I guess, and I have not yet gone out there, perhaps I should have, just to walk around and look at that site, but maybe that's something, I don't know if everybody else has been out there, but maybe that's something I'd like to do yet or just. And I appreciate the idea of, you know, obtaining everything south of Thirty-fourth Street as well. I'm just wondering at this point, do we have to do? Can we start without not selling the house?
Other thoughts?
So, originally, I was thinking, you know, let's portion this off and sell the house and try to recoup some of the costs so that we can kind of pay it forward into additional projects and things. Kind of like what you said, Tim, as far as, you know, let's maybe think about this and, you know, seeing how we can maybe do some different things here. I guess I would say my preference would be to hold right now, not necessarily tear the house down, but not necessarily sell it either, because I'd like to wait and see what happens with these Spark Grants, because that's a big key to, I think, you know, being able to proceed with this project and this kind of vision that we have for that property with, you know, now that we have a bridge that's usable, you know, we thought we were gonna have to put a new bridge in at the cost of, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. We've got two more shots at that grant. I guess I'd kind of like to see where that shakes out over the next year. We've got two more chances to apply and, you know, make a decision at that point if we know we're gonna have funds coming in to help, you know, make this project happen or not, or if we're gonna have to spend local money, you know, to do that. You know, I think that should factor into the discussion too, but. So, I guess my preference would be to do nothing right now, and let's just wait and see what we end up getting as far as any additional grant funds and then go from there. But I like leaving options open to do some different things here. Maybe we sell it in the future if that makes sense, or maybe we don't, you know.
Yeah, I'll support the original plan. I'm wedded to the original plan. I'm out there already as publicly having, with a neighbor that I know, having supported the original plan and having foreseen this within days of the purchase, I figured there'd be a proposal for a parking lot in that exact spot, and I told that neighbor I will never support a parking lot in that spot. And I just, I'm principally opposed, though, to tearing down a perfectly good, usable house and in the midst of a national housing crisis. We did do that once before with our cemetery expansion. That house was in much worse shape than this one. This one, we got somebody who wants to buy it. I would just put, I would support the original plan, putting that money, that piece of the property back in the tax rolls. We still have room to do all the stuff that you talked about in the remaining property that we have, which is most of it, of that six acres. So, I will, if it comes to a vote, I will be opposing tearing down the house, and I support selling the house.
Randy?
You know, I would like to think there'd be twenty-four cars that are sort of that. It's so popular, but I really can't see more than, you know, maybe six or eight cars ever. I just don't see the use that strong right away, so, especially since there's not really a park back there yet, you know, so, I mean, there's, my point is there's still room for a little parking there if we wanted to do that.
Yeah, if we sold it, we could have part of the parking lot.
You could have a half a parking lot or a small gravel area or something where it wouldn't seem like a parking lot even.
Could we put parking where we're gonna tear down the chapel? And what's gonna go there?
Yeah.
That's the intention to do.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And I saw like in the budget tonight, it was demo of the chapel. It was in the budget. Justin, thoughts?
Yeah, I think I tend to agree with Councilmember Truist in that I don't understand why we would destroy a house. We just had a discussion on the housing crisis, and so I don't think we should be in the business of doing that. I do think, though, if we're on the losing side of that, and I'm liking what I'm hearing, if there is some form of parking in there, I don't think we should be adding concrete or impervious surfaces right next to the creek. That doesn't make any sense. That's already an area that floods incredibly, so we want to be very mindful about not adding more that would contribute to that problem, but I agree with the comments made by Councilmember Truist.
I'm inclined to maybe not put in the parking lot right now. That idea, I'm not sure about that. I'm also not sure that selling a house is really in the best interest right now. You can only sell it once, and when it's gone, it's gone. I kind of like the idea of maybe something else there other than a parking lot, but something that all the neighbors could enjoy, like a couple picnic tables underneath a tree, something, you know, whatever. I mean, it doesn't have to be very elaborate.
I like Randy's idea. Maybe, why don't we maybe tour it, and we tour the house too and
Yeah.
and have another discussion.
Yeah, I've walked the property.
Yeah, you better know.
A few times, so.
I've walked the property as well, but, yeah.
So, I'm not hearing, Dennis, an overwhelming desire to put it on the market right away.
Well, that's good to know, and that's why we wanted to have this discussion. A couple of comments just before we are ending the conversation. I am in no way advocating for a parking lot this evening. This is just the easiest way in my, in a visualization of what could go on the property. You could substitute ten picnic tables. You could substitute a beach volleyball court. I don't know, but this just gave a very good, reasonable way to understand the scale. And then also, while it is perfectly fine to hold for now, please keep in mind that we do not want to get into the business of leaving vacant houses. So, I just made a note this evening based on your comments on the Spark Grant that I'm gonna bring this back to talk about it again if nothing happens. When we get the results of the next Spark Grant round, I'll bring this up again. And if we are unfortunate in that process, then we don't get money, and we apply for the third round, I will bring it back at that time, too. We just do not want to make a habit of leaving property that is owned by the city vacant and unattended to. Plus, it's going to become an issue for, you know, Charlie and his crew on keeping that property maintained. And then, thirdly, if you do want to go on a tour, just let me know and we'll arrange that. I mean, we'll have to clean up all of the food crumbs and stuff for when we have lunch out there, but. Thank you very much.
Do we have a deadline? Josh, maybe you'll, so you're gonna chime in on the Spark Grant.
You know, I think the next round opened May first, and it closes sometime in June or something, I think, and I don't know, the third round is still out there. I guess my question was, not that the city wants to get in the landlord business, but, you know, if this would take, you know, some time, is it a possibility to rent the house out? You know, use a property management company or something and rent the house out in the meantime to generate some revenue?
The word liability just is flashing all around me right now.
The two guys that are in that business are shaking.
I mean, I agree. I don't think we want to just sit on a house and leave it vacant for, you know, years. But, you know, you sell it once, it's gone, you know, if we have some kind of opportunity to do something down the road, then, you know, we don't have that, so.
I have done that in the past, and the real difficulty rises when you don't want to do that anymore. And when you want to stop renting, then it becomes a huge problem for the city.
You're still looking for a house, though, right?
Waterfront.
Waterfront property. Right next to a park.
I'm hearing the indication this evening is I'm hearing, hold for now.
Right, but, you know, not forever. As is...
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember comments, Jared, let's start with you tonight.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'd just like to praise a couple of people in this room. Mr. Leachman, obviously, for your immediate efforts in, with Environmental Sustainability Committee. This is a great event, and thank you, councilperson, for supporting this. We do have another board member spot that just came open on our Environmental Sustainability Committee, so if you have friends or neighbors that are interested in serving, that's another great spot. And second to Teresa for the coordination with Harbor Light in Oakstown. Tom, this is awesome. And Teresa, your value to this new position already is being shown immediately, so thank you, and looking forward to more fun things coming to downtown Granville with your help. So thank you. That's it.
That was really good. I will echo that, ditto, especially to Teresa. Well done, quite feather in your cap, and really fills a needed hole downtown, so well done. Thank you.
That's three. Two thumbs up for Teresa, that's all.
Justin?
I agree with that. I'm really excited about the Oakstown Brewery. I've never been to the South Haven Brewery, but I've heard a lot of great things, so I'm excited to see what you have here in Granville.
Yeah, same for me. I'm excited as well. I think it'll be great. I like the name. So it was just, you know, the question was kind of more about the branding, I guess, but I like that you're using a, a local name and, you know, kind of creating its own identity down there, so looking forward to it. Best, best wishes as you, you know, continue working on that project. And thanks to Teresa for, you know, your work on the economic development and the connection with businesses and stuff, you know. I was also gonna mention, so a lot of questions have come up in the last week, you know, the Park and Rec Board in collaboration with the city, with the Public Works Department, has been very busy. You know, you heard about it in the presentation from Jane earlier about how we're spending our ARPA funds towards a lot of park and public space improvements, and some of those are already underway. The playground equipment came out this past week in, at Calvin Crest, and generated a lot of questions and interest from the neighbors and people that are used to using that playground. Talked to Charlie a few minutes beforehand just to get an idea of timelines and stuff. It sounds like equipment will be going back in in the next couple of weeks, and it'll be a month to six weeks or so before that playground is completed, but it should be really nice. It's gonna be all-new equipment, it's gonna have some portable place, safety surface, so that should be a really nice improvement. And then, once that's done, we'll move over to Wedgewood and do kind of the same thing. So, you know, there'll be some construction going on in parks over the summer, and then pickleball will be going over there as well. So there will be some inconvenience to people that are used to using the parks and the playgrounds, because, you know, that kind of comes with improvements and with construction, but lots of great things going on in the parks, and there should be some really nice improvements once that's done. We're thankful to Sinclair Recreation and Game Time for actually helping provide some funding as well through some grants to help defray some of the costs of that playground equipment, which is great. Again, it helps us kind of move some of those ARPA funds forward to be able to do some other projects. We've got the new basketball courts at Heritage and at Calvin Crest as well. The Ash Vault went in on that last year. There'll be some painting that goes in to finish that up, but people have already been out there using it, having a good time. We've got work going on at Heritage with the, the dock and the walkway, the seawall there, that'll be coming as well. So lots of great things going on in the parks this year, lots of construction, but it should be some really nice improvements to the benefit of the entire community. So just ask people to be patient, you know, as those things are happening. It takes time, it takes energy and effort, and some things may not be available for certain times, but it should be well worth it when it's all done. So I just wanted to mention that publicly for everybody, because there's been lots of questions about, hey, what's going on? And saw things were taken out, and when is that gonna be happening and so forth? So just wanted to share that for the benefit of the public. Park and Rec Board's really happy to see a lot of these projects going on. There've been things that have been on our list for years now for improvements, and now there's some funding available to be able to make that happen, so really good. So thanks to Charlie and the DPW crew for all the work on that as well. That's it.
I just want to extend your welcome, our new Oakstown neighbors, and thank you, Teresa, for your hard work. We're thrilled that you're here, so happy, happy to see something going in there. Then a little bit more of a boring topic. I spent a long afternoon with the Kent County Department of Public Works, specifically the Waste Energy Advisory Committee, and I think you, the mayor and Dennis, probably know a little bit of what's going on, but the county is gonna be taking a new approach to solid waste management. And the history has been, for the last 40 years, the county has controlled the flow of trash in the six cities, and the six cities have always felt like we paid too much, and the townships, Cascade, Virgin's, you know, Sparta, wherever, were getting off easy. So the, the county is now looking at a plan to have county-wide flow control, so every local government in the county, the county board, the Department of Public Works will control that. So some of the terms you're gonna be hearing, you're gonna be hearing more about bioenergy, and that is a component that the county is looking at putting in with the sustainable business park down by 100th Street by the old landfill. There's only about seven years of life in the landfill left. Another issue that we're gonna have to deal with here is the potential or the possible of franchising. And as part of this whole process, the County Board of Public Works would like every municipality to sell franchising rights to a company that will collect the trash in your city, and then through that process, as we as Granville could have, try to have some influence whether we still want ours to go to the waste energy facility or a landfill, which we'll be phasing out, or a new concept called bioenergy, which is different than waste energy. Lot to learn, but you're gonna be hearing a lot about this, especially this summer, to complicate matters as the county is trying to plan this. The state legislature is looking at Public Act 115, which they have some say in, in solid waste issues in the state, but I just kind of wanted everyone to be aware that that's coming, and if you have questions, you could contact me or maybe Commissioner Pottingstein or the Public Works Board, you know, for more information. And I suspect the information's gonna be changing every 30 to 45 days going forward for the next two years, how this comes about. I kind of have mixed feelings on franchising, you know, garbage, trash, solid waste management in our city. And this, but what we have right now is, you know, you have Company A that maybe picks up 20% of the trash, and Company B picks up 30% of the trash, and Company C picks up 15% of the trash. So you're running garbage, you know, trucks, waste recovery vehicles down your roads, you know, five days a week. The thought is to be able to offset some of the costs that the county would have, because the county will have to bond for a lot of this, and that'll raise, you know, everyone's tax bills on that county portion of their bill. But these, the thought is, there could be a fair amount of savings if every municipality would franchise and just award, you know, the bid, the franchising right to one contractor to, you know, remove the solid waste in your community. So all that is in the works, and just thought I'd throw that out there for you, so...
Good, thanks for the update. I know there's big dollars involved in the whole process, so great, great summary. Thank you.
Thanks.
Again, folks from Oakstown, thank you here, that's some enthusiasm and excitement. Glad you're gonna be here. You said you live elsewhere, but I bet with opening a new business, you'll feel like you live in Granville, so...
Fire and stuff.
Yeah, it's almost, almost Granville, so...
Sure.
All right. I think that's all I've got. Oh, Jane, just wanted to say, too, thank you for the whole budget process, making it coherent, and thank you for your, kind of your perspective on fund balance and pushing out money. I like that phrase, because yes, we are collecting it, and we should be passed through rather than a hoarder, so anyway, great, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourned, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposition, please say no. Great. Thank you, guests, for being here this evening.